Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Trenton City Council meeting of Thursday, October 21st, 2021. We ask this time that you mute your devices and remain muted throughout the meeting until such time as recognized by the Trenton City Council Chairman at the appropriate portion. If you need to mute or unmute yourself from the landline, please dial star six. To raise or lower your hand from a landline, please dial star nine. If you're on a smart device, you can mute and unmute yourself by looking through the little microphone and clicking on it until the slash appears or disappears from it. If you're on a computer, you can actually hit your spacebar. I just did to mute and unmute your microphone. We will be beginning shortly. We thank you for your patience and we look forward to your participation at the appropriate time. Once again, please wait to be recognized by the Trenton City Council President. Tonight's public portion will be an open topic, so you can speak on any topic for 10 minutes within the rules of decorum. And we appreciate your attendance and we will begin shortly. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Trenton City Council meeting of Thursday, October 21st, 2021. Please remain muted about the council meetings such time as recognized by the Trenton City Council. We appreciate your patience tonight. We will begin shortly. Tonight's public comment is an open public comment section. You will be able to speak for 10 minutes on the topic of your choice, as long as you remain within the rules of decorum. We also ask that you don't attack any specific member or any specific employee during those meetings, just in line with Robert rule of order. At this point in time, if you'd like to mute or unmute yourself on the landline, you can dial star six to raise or unraise your hand on the land. You dial star nine. You mute and unmute yourself by hitting the spacebar. If you're on a smart device, otherwise, or a tablet, please look for the microphone and hit it until you see the slash appear and disappear through it. If everyone who is not on council or professional that has about to speak, please mute yourselves at this time. We appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Conlin. How are you?
Doing very well, ma'am. Very well.
All right. Do we have a call?
We do. We have six members present, ma'am.
Okay, great, great. So, Mr. Conlin, after we do the call for the, for the directors, if you could put the memo up on the screen and if you could be so kind as to read it off for me this evening, I'd appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws, 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the First Board of Board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken this evening. Mr. Conlin, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Present.
Excuse me, let me close my window. Pardon me for the interruption. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn will be with us shortly. Council President McBride.
Present.
City Clerk is here. Mr. Klowgi.
I'm present. Thank you.
Legislative Council is present. Council President, would you like me to call the directors?
Yes, please.
Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, President.
Mr. Cherry. Mr. Liston.
Present.
Mr. Bridges.
Present.
Good evening, Count.
Mr. Wilson.
Present. Ms. Samuel's here as well. We're going to tag team this because I have a bit of an overlap, but we're both here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Doug.
Good evening, President.
Mr. Dan.
Good evening, President.
Dr. Lopez.
Good evening, President.
Director Honorable, Mr. Ron Terry. Director Honorable Terry. Ms. Richardson.
I am present. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, hello, stranger.
Ms. Lavender.
Hello.
Good evening, President.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Zelinski.
Present.
Council President, before I read your memo, I'd like to do the invocation of flag salute if you don't mind.
Oh, definitely, most definitely.
We all bow our heads for the invocation. Almighty God, we ask for the wisdom of this council and their deliberations. We also ask for protection of all federal, states, county and municipal employees in the carrying out of their duties and that they may be protected because a lot of them put their lives in danger every day. We ask, in your name, amen. We'd all rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President McBride has asked for a statement to be read into the record at the top of the meeting.
Yes, I just want to explain what the statement is. Today, I was able, along with my colleague, Councilman Santiago Rodriguez, we were able to meet with the county and the county has agreed to loan the city equipment for the radio room to avert any last minute ditch by the venue that's there now. And so I think that the, the county executive, Brian Hughes, has did the city a big solid on this one, and I want to thank him and his staff. And I would also like to thank the mayor for agreeing to these terms. Mr. Conlin, could you please read it?
Yes, this is a memorandum from the Council President to the members of the Trenton City Council regarding the emergency radio system for the city of Trenton. To Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson, Councilman Blakely, Councilman Harrison, Councilman Michelle, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Vaughn from Council President Kathy McBride. Date, October 21st, 2021, RE Emergency Services Radio Room. Members of council, I am pleased to advise that the potential emergency situation involving the threatened shutdown of Trenton's police communication system on October 31st, 2021 has been resolved. The county immersive will, without cost, loan the city the necessary radios and equipment to ensure continuation of this vital public safety service. We will also be able to rent any additional needed units or equipment from the manufacturer. It is anticipated that this arrangement will remain in effect for up to six months if necessary. However, we clearly need to move toward a permanent solution without delay. In this regard, the administration will immediately proceed with engaging a vendor by appropriate legal means to provide the necessary equipment and installation of a state-of-the-art communication system for the Trenton Department. All information relating to the vendor of the contract and detailed costs for each aspect of the equipment and services will be provided to council for review and approval by resolution. In this way, the governing body and the citizens of Trenton will have the most detailed information available about the new system prior to approving it. If this is done in an expeditious fashion, council may be able to vote to approve the applicable expenditures as early as November. I wish to thank Mercer County Executive Brian Hughes, New York Council for the city of Trenton, and Mayor Garcia Ora for the effects, for the efforts expended in bringing this difficult situation to a close and ensuring the continued protection of our residents. This matter underscores what can be accomplished when all components of government work together for the benefit of the people. Kathy McBride, Council President.
Thank you. You may continue with the docket, Mr. Conlin.
Yes, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to ask once again that you take the time to mute your devices at this point in time. If you were on a landline, please dial star six to do so. And if you are on a smart device, please hit the little microphone. I asked that IT, please mute anybody who, who, even indirectly affected the meeting until touch that time is public portion. Thank you very much. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the docket?
Yes, please.
Council President, we are still working on minutes. There are 21 communications and petitions on the docket. We will have two trainee reports for the months of the next meeting. The communications and petitions reports are, there are 21 communications and petitions. And I didn't know if Mr. Bridges or any of the members of the law department wanted to contact or conduct, comment on Ms. Vaughn's request to know what the Purdue Pharma issues were about with the filings she had asked about 2C, the Purdue Pharma and the US Bankruptcy Corp. But Council President, we can do that later when she arrives if you want.
All righty.
Do I have a motion to approve the communications and petitions and reports?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Blakely, and first, my Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we're. Council President, we have a second reading of public hearing. This was adjourned from, this was adjourned from October 7th, 2021, as my understanding from.
There's too, there's too much talking in the background.
I understand, ma'am.
They need to stop that.
Yeah, I'm going through. If IT can help, then please assist in muting any of the background information coming through. Greatly appreciated. Council President, my understanding from docket review on Tuesday that there might be a motion to adjourn this to a later date, is that correct?
Which, which one was that?
This is on Bond Street, 69.
Yes, that, he wanted that, he wanted that adjourned to November the 4th. He wanted to table that to November the 4th.
Uh, we, it'd be table adjourned, seems in this case.
Okay, well, adjourned.
So, I have a motion to adjourn the hearing to November the 4th by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
No, that was by Mr. Douglas.
That can't be by Mr. Douglas, ma'am.
Okay.
Wait, okay. I'll second it.
So, the motion was brought up by Council President McBride. It was by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, all in favor of adjourning to the November 4th date.
Yes.
I definitely need two more of this.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any opposed, any members opposed? Seeing none opposed, the public hearing for ordinance 21-022, authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city path map, tax map is 6969 F Bond Street, Block 8403, Lot 65 and 66 pursuant to NJ SA 40 cap on 12-13 B5 to Matt International Corporation with a sum of $9,000. It's hereby adjourned to November 4th, 2021. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the resolution?
Yes, please.
First, we have a consent agenda, Council President. Would you like me to read the numbers into the record?
Yes, I thought it was another, I thought it was another, uh, resolution that the, all right ahead, go ahead.
If, if, after the consent agenda, anybody, you know, if you want to entertain walk-ons, but that's up to you, ma'am. This is for the consent agenda to read the numbers, consent agenda is 21-453, 21-456, 21-457, 21-459, 21-460, 21-463, 21-464, 21-465, 21-467, 21-468, 21-469, 21-40, 21-471, 21-42, 21-473, 21-475, 21-476, and 21-480. Do I, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
I have motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Two, three. I have a second to follow the roll. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn is being noted as absent. Consent agenda carries by a vote of 60, one member absent. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the roll call? Or would you like to entertain any questions for walk-ons?
Well, the, there'll be no walk-ons this evening. The number 21-458 was pulled by, so do you, do we need to adjourn that or what? It's a resolution and Director, Acting Director Steve Wilson asked that it be taken off.
Oh, it is, and it's noted, and it is actually noted on the docket that it has been pulled by administration at conference session, and that's all we can do. So, it was actually brought up.
Okay, thank you.
They can bring back to the floor. I believe they requested to come back to the floor on November 4th, but if they, they would have to make that request.
All righty.
President, would you proceed to the roll call?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am. First, we have a resolution, 21-454 from the Department of the Federation. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Trenton, 2286, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, GLCIO. Let me put this up on the screen. Do I have a motion? This is, hold on. Do I have a motion or resolution?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Harrison. Second.
Is this the George Floyd?
No, ma'am. The George Floyd went on the consent agenda. This is AFL-CIO resolution approving the contract for 2286.
Oh, okay, yeah, definitely.
Council, is that the second?
Yes.
I have a second, but I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, the second by Council President McBride, floor is open. Would you like me to call the roll, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride.
Yes.
So, order, the resolution carries by a vote of 60, one member absent. Next, we have resolution 21-455, a resolution accepting for consideration by city council, the Phase One Expenditure Plan for the city of Trenton for funds received pursuant to the American. Do I have a motion?
No move.
A motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Which, um, is this, this is not the union, this is.
No, ma'am. This is resolution, my apologies, if you think you want, this is resolution 21-455. This is the mayor's ARP plan. A motion by, second, my Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, the floor is open.
Madam President?
Go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Hey, for some reason, this time around, I didn't get the background information behind the resolutions.
Um, Mr. Councilman Rodriguez, there is a lot of background noise and we can't hear you.
If IT could actively participate in muting people, that would be most appreciated. Thank you very much.
Go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
The, I had problem assessing the background information on all these resolutions because they were placed one at a time. It's a bunch of them, so I couldn't, right now, I used to, right behind the resolution, I used to get the background information by a computer, but now this time around, I couldn't get it that way.
They went out by email on Friday, sir.
Yes, I, I just checked it out. The whole package is there, but the, the, you put them like individually, but I don't know which one is which one, you know, that was, we sent about 25 or so.
Right, so they actually start in numerical order from the first email and then they proceed through the emails because I can't send, the entire package would be like six or seven gigabytes, there's thousands of pages in it, so I can't send it in just one, one email. It has to be broken up by resolution, so we broke it up into parts, but it is in sequential order. So, if you go to email two or email three, all those resolutions are individually attached there. If you.
I'm using my, my computer now, so I've got, get out of the meeting to access it, you know, that is, the way you had it before, where the background information was behind each resolution.
It is.
And it kept on going. That was easier for me, but this way, you know, I don't, you know, it's, it's a little difficult for me to get through them.
It is, there was actually no.
I have the, the major's plan, I don't have it in front of me to vote on, so.
I'm going to grab it right now and email it to you right now, sir.
I'll my personal email, please, because the, the, the city one I'm using that.
Okay, so while, while the councilman is getting that and looking over this particular resolution, can we move on to another resolution?
Uh, we do have a motion on the floor, by Mr. Harrison, the second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. The floor is opened up for questions.
There is, um, no questions.
Seeing no questions, Council President, would you like me to call the roll?
Well, Mr. Councilman Rodriguez do have questions, but he has to.
That's the problem, I just don't vote.
Okay, all righty, go ahead with the vote.
Mr. Blakely. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No vote.
Ms. Vaughn. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to one, one abstention, or one absent, one no vote. Next, we have resolution 21-456, a resolution awarding contract to refer in open process in accordance with NJ SA 19:44 cap A. Hold on, wait one second, this might be in the consent. Now, this is on the consent. So, it's next is resolution 21-460. Put that up on the screen.
That's consent.
21-460 is actually on the roll call, ma'am.
It's a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is resolution 21-460, resolution authorizing Simon, a 23 tax sales certificate totals $169,376 and 36 cents pursuant to NJ SA 54:5-113.
What number is that? I can't find it.
21-460, ma'am.
I'm on the call, Council President.
Yes, so noted, Mr. Conlin, Councilwoman Vaughn is here.
Do I have a motion for 21-460?
No move.
Motion by Ms. Caldwell, I have a second, by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
Mr. Conlin, we're going to move to the vote.
Yes, ma'am. This is Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to four. Next, we have resolution 21-462, this is a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton Department of Health and Human Services to accept the fiscal year 2020 COC program grant from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. I have a motion.
Uh, Council President, before we go on, I asked for the listing, I didn't get it.
Um, Mr. Mr. Conlin, um, did, did you get that list for the Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, the list went out, it did arrive from Dr. Lopez, or the various items arrived from Dr. Lopez this afternoon and we're forwarded to the body as soon as they arrived. Uh, they went out by email.
I received mine.
I didn't see mine.
Yeah, they went out to the entire body.
I didn't get it, so can you send it to me now, please? Because I did not get it.
Okay, it's an IT issue then, but it was addressed to you. Just bear with me for a second, please.
Well, I don't need, well, you don't need to go to the IT department now.
No, ma'am, I'm going to grab the email and I'm going to forward it to you.
Okay. No time for that. But yet again, this comes out at 12:30 on the day of the meeting and there's no real time for me to review it. And I don't even see the, the names of, the, I don't even see the, where's the appropriation allocation. I don't see any of the appro, the allocations by, um, by nonprofit.
Somebody drumming?
IT, yes.
I'm forwarding the email I forwarded earlier. And there it is.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
But doesn't, it has, doesn't have the, the itemized appropriation or allocation.
I would imagine at this point in time, we would have to ask Dr. Lopez for that information,
ma'am. How can we vote on this and we don't know how much money is being given to each, you got a $4.8 million grant and the money's being allocated to designated nonprofits? So, and the council doesn't know who's getting that money and how much? Where is the allocation?
Hi, Dr. Lopez, I submitted the information. I do not understand why you guys don't have the allocation. I broke everything down. Um, so I have it in my packet, I'm just not understanding. I did explain it to you guys on the call on Tuesday about the sub recipients on what they receive is approximately 21.
Can you, can you put it up on the screen or send it to me now, Ms. Lopez?
Well, I'm at home. I don't have it at my home address. I have it at my work. It's not saved on the shared drive.
I have both of the documents you sent me earlier. Put either one of them on the screen if you'd like, ma'am.
But there's nothing in there that speaks allocation, or if I'm reading something wrong. Is it in these two documents, Dr. Lopez?
Yes, it should have been a third one attached that had all the allocation of the sub recipients.
Yeah, the only, the email that we received only had two attachments, ma'am.
Yeah, it should have been three of the sub recipient because it explained about the advertising piece, it explained about, I broke down in regards to the number of residents who are Trenton residents based on the HIMIS system that we go by and provided the percentage and also provided the sub recipients, which I explained on Tuesday, and the allocated amount.
Yeah, you sent it at 10:20 AM to myself, Mr. Bridges and Mr. Cruz. The only attachments were fiscal year 2020 COC program notice and the fiscal year 2020 grant agreements. I don't know if the grant agreements individually have the, I, I see that there's amounts on them, so I would imagine that they would have some of the grant numbers in there.
But what does, what does 2020 have to do with 2021?
Well, it's 2020 HUD is a year behind, so we're, the way that fiscal year is allocated, this is a renewal grant for the, for that amount, so it's for fiscal year 2020. When you approved earlier this year. Uh, when you approved le, um, earlier this year, I believe it was, it was fiscal year nineteen. So HUD uh fiscal year is a little bit different. Uh, when they allocate their grant award. So we're currently working on twenty-twenty-one. The timeframe is different.
So so we're we're, I just want to put on the record, so. This is, I mean, uh, Council President, um. I I cannot vote on this resolution and I'm not going to vote on it, it's, I cannot see. Uh, I have no reports from the administration. On who is getting this money? All I ask, actually, Ron Zelensky sent the, you know, it's just the itemized list of who is, how much. Was appropriated to each nonprofit organization, who's getting the grant money in the city of Trenton?
Absolutely, and that should have been a third attachment, and I'm not sure why you don't have a third attachment on that. That gets in there. Because I do have that information.
You gonna say on the desk, you know somebody I will?
Yeah, hell yeah. Yeah, but what I'm trying to tell you is.
Then you guys mute yourselves.
He has to shut those people down. Those block him out.
I still do need a motion in a second.
If we're not gonna be, if we're not gonna be transparent about HUD um funding. Then that just be another item for the authorities to uh investigate. Because that information should be here with this docket, attached to the resolution. For the council to review and vote on it.
And I agree, Councilwoman, and I have that with my packet, again, I don't understand why the entire packet wasn't provided to you guys originally. Um, and I sent the third attachment, don't understand why it wasn't on the email at ten-twenty-five when it was sent. Now, what I could guarantee is that I can send it first thing tomorrow morning. But again, I did submit that the sub recipients, and I'm not sure why it's not all, the third attachment is not included in that email. So there is transparency, there's nothing.
Who did you send the email to with the three, with the three attachments?
Well, Mr. Conlin just explained that I sent it to him. So, but he said he received two attachments, and I'm explaining why, I don't understand why the third attachment was on there.
Yeah, the the email is on the screen, that's what I received at ten-twenty-one this morning. So there are only two attachments attached. I can't, you know, it's not, that's the email, I don't know what else to tell you.
So do you have your email up, Ms. uh, Ms. um? Can you forward that to me, Ms. um Lopez, please? The email.
It's the same email that he just, that's the same email he just sent to you.
But that, but the third one was removed.
The third attachment is just not, it's not here, ma'am, there was no third attachment. There were only two attachments, this is your original email on the screen, there were only two.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
So again, okay, and which is fine, because I sent it from my work email, so if I s- look at from my laptop, it's gonna be too different because it's not from a shared drive. So I'll look and see, but that was sent as.
I don't see how that 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 that's possible, you know, if you're logged into your system right now, you should be able to log in on the network.
And go, I hear you, I I understand what you're saying, so I'mma look and I'mma see it. And what's on there, what I'm saying is, I don't understand why the third attachment wasn't on there when it was sent. Again, there is transparency.
Explain, that's why, because somebody is being shady and they deleted it, that's why, they took it off. So either, either you are misunderstanding or Mr. Colin, but I get the, I I, you know, I I'm.
Email I received, I don't know how I could change an email that I received, there were only. On the email that I.
Yeah, yeah, but no, when he forwarded to the council, he he just didn't forward the third, um, you can remove the attachment and just send.
Not receive a third attachment.
I don't.
Here is the, here is the email.
Okay, well, it just disappeared in cyberspace then.
Well, ma'am.
Okay, so so let me be, so let me just be clear, we don't have the third attachment. And um.
We don't have.
She doesn't have enough information to vote, so we're gonna um. Move to take the vote and. For everyone that feels comfortable with what they have.
They send me directly that email. Send it to me directly, you don't have to send it to the clerk, you can send it to me directly.
Please also provide the information for the body as well, Ms. Lopez, though.
They're not interested, they're not interested in it, I asked for it. So send it to me directly, please.
Please also copy the clerk so I can forward to the rest of the body, ma'am, thank you.
I I will, I will go through uh Westbury. And go that route, I'll make sure you guys get it.
I want to share it with the community, send me that information. Immediately.
Thank you, so so the resolution is up for a vote, um, Mr. Conlin, move to the vote.
I don't even have a motion, ma'am, I asked a couple times if I gotta get a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
Cole Wilson, let's call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Just call the roll.
Turn it in, just turn it in.
Mr. Harrison.
It's rolling away.
Mr. Mr. You are interrupting, please, unmute yourself, sir. Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh, no vote.
Ms. Vaughn.
No vote.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to one with two no votes. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash four sixty-six. Resolution authorizing appropriation, two hundred thousand dollars for the funds allocated to the city of Trenton. Under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one for installation of mobile office trailers at the Trenton Animal Shelter.
Uh, Council President? Council President?
There's a, there's a motion on the.
Yeah, this is, this is, and Mr. Harrison, Ms. Cole Wilson actually walked us down with you, would you mind co-sponsorship?
Don't be, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add my name to uh to co-sponsor this. It's it's okay, so Harrison, Cole Wilson, Harrison Blakely, any other members wish to be added? I have, I have first, I have an introduction and a co-sponsorship by Mr. Cole Wilson, Harrison, the second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
President McBride.
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm very excited to be voting on this matter. I received a number of emails from uh animal lovers uh in the Trenton uh community. I find this proposal to be uh prudent and a good one. I'm not necessarily an animal lover, but uh, you know, I definitely believe that uh they should uh. Have dignity and safety and all that good stuff, so I'll be voting in favor of uh this uh resolution, thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I just have a couple of housekeeping items regarding animal, animal rocks, Trenton Animal Rocks, the nonprofit organization. As well as the Trenton Animal Shelter. Uh, is um, is Ms. Lopez. Dr. Lopez.
Yes, I'm here.
clarity, I have received a couple of emails regarding this resolution. And one of the things that some of the residents, uh, two residents, as a matter of fact, had inquired about. Everybody loves animals, actually, I grew up with two, had a German Shepherd and I had a a Chow, a Chinese Chow. Uh, in in our family, um, uh, for most of my childhood into my younger adult life. So I am a dog lover. And I appreciate the work that animal shelters uh perform in 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 their service. However, I want to make sure that the structure is in place to provide that in the city. Organization structures in place and effective to support the animal shelter, the Trenton Animal Shelter. So can you just give the residents a little background, um, answer, um, well, very quickly. This Trent Animal Shelter is un, is in the Department of Department of Health and Human Services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how many, how many Trenton employees are at the animal shelter?
So I have a um. A shelter manager, uh, and I have three assist, um, animal control officers. So it's, and also have a maintenance personnel laborer, they are all Trenton employees.
Okay, so a lot of folks have called in in the West Ward to the animal. And the animal, the Trenton Animal Shelter. And Trent Animal Control, are they one and the same?
Just Animal Shelter and Animal Control, two are the same.
Are are, is that under, are both under your purview? Or one is?
Yes.
Okay, they're both under your purview?
Yes, Animal Shelter is where we house the uh pets and we also have our employees working at the animal shelter. Which is underneath the Animal Control or Animal Enforcement Bureau, yes.
Okay, so the the questions that I'm getting from folks in 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 the, in the West Ward is, we have a lot of animals, not just dogs. But, you know, um, deer, um, was found, you know, dead, you know, at one person's home, we have had. Um, uh, uh raccoons and skunks and. And and opossums and a whole slew of animals around, and every time they try to call, they can't get any service. So, and here we are, we're talking about two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars allocation from the COVID funds. And uh. And I, I just wanna. I'm getting a lot of feedback. So the residents are curious as to how the Animal Control Department and how um the Trent Animal Shelter. The city piece. Um. Is not, it's not properly funded. So we approve a budget for your department, right? And you have uh come up with a number that you perceived. That would be sufficient to run the animal shelter, Trent Animal Shelter and Animal Control units, correct, Dr. Lopez?
Right.
Okay, so why was not, why was this um particular item not included in your budget this year?
Okay, well, I just want to backtrack, because you're taking, you're speaking on two separate things. When you're talking about uh uh other animals like raccoons and things of that nature. So when I explained that I have three animal control officers, that mean that we're understaffed. We have one that just were uh promoted to the Fire Academy. And we have one that's leaving for the Sheriff Department, so we're understaffed in animal control. And so they are also responsible for responding to that in the community as well as running the shelter. As regards, in regard to the two trellers, that was um uh uh agreement, a plan that um. Made prior to my um tenure here with the, with the city. And so those two items were already purchased, but again, they didn't consider the plumbing and electrical work for these two trellers. These two trellers are necessary, not for tar, but it's for animal shelter, it's for housing purposes. We are overcrowded, there's a fire hazard when you have those number of pets and employees. And also tar who won the bid for a contract to run the shelter is too many people and pets in one facility. So this is why this wasn't allocated in my budget, because this is something that's different, that came from a previous um agreement. That was made with the the two trellers that was purchased and the plumbing and electrical work was not considered. So when I came along and we went through all the paperwork, we realized that was not um part of. The um leasing and payment agreement, and so in order for us to utilize that, we need plumbing and electrical. Work for that, if not, we're just gonna have two trellers sitting there and unable to be used. So this is why this resolution is put up, so we can have the additional funding for the plumbing, plumbing and electrical work. So we're gonna put out a bid for that, so we're not in a violation and have a fire hazard. And have a safe and and healthy work environment, also a location where we're housing pets in the animal shelter, so that's the purpose of it.
Okay, very good, so um, and the, the other concern was that it is, where you are using, was unfortunate that. Um, this was not part of your uh two hundred, I mean, your um twenty-twenty-one budget planning. Um. And the the concern that the residents have and I have as well, that we want to make sure that the ARPA funds are being spent prudently. Now, we have a big, we we're talking about um uh providing a shelter for animals. But right today, when you look at how we spent, how we're spending our ARPA funds. We have a homeless crisis amongst human beings. And I just want to make sure, Ms. Dr. Lopez, that we are also, that you are also uh huddling with the mayor. About um adequate funds to ensure that properties around the city are upgraded. And um for for shelter of humans, of human beings. And residents of the city and some of the other folks that come into the city who who are in crisis um regarding homelessness. So it would be a shame, and that was, that was one of the ARPA, one of the priority. Uh, one of the priorities of the ARPA funds, to help uh with quarantine and shelters for our fellow mankind, right? So I don't see anything in the mayor's plan for that. So is it in your plan? Is it in your plan? Is it, is it in your plan, uh, uh, Dr. Lopez, to have, this is my last question, is it your plan, any of your plan? To have um a re, a a resolution put forward allocating funds to build out housing for homeless residents?
We 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 must stick to this resolution, um, Councilwoman Vaughn, the resolution before you.
Okay, well, I hope that we have a resolution sho, shortly about uh developing housing for homeless, for uh fellow man. And woman and women for for uh homeless shelters, and animals are important, but but they should not be prioritized over human beings.
Thank you, um, the the motion.
I have my hand up, Councilwoman.
Council President, can I say something too? I just want to add that.
Let uh Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson speak.
Yeah, well, 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 first of all, I don't think they're giving priority to to animals over humankind. But we are obligated as a city to um take in animals into our shelter. And take care of them and try and find them homes. But of course, Ms. Vaughn, perhaps you would rather have strays running around the city. Um, causing infections among children and biting kids or whatever. I mean, I don't, I don't understand, but you're more than welcome to come and visit the shelter sometime. And see the conditions that these workers have to work in and the cramped conditions that they have to work in. That 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 shelter budget is bare bones, has never received support from previous administrations. And if we are going to run our animal shelter efficiently, then we need the tools to do it. So I would urge my colleagues to support this, the shelter has been overwhelmed since the COVID crisis. People have been turning in their animals, animals have been picked up in the streets, they're abandoning them. And when an animal is abandoned and they find them chained to the fence, the animal can't tell them it's from Trenton, they have to take it in. So I would urge each and every one of you to show some compassion here. Because we have already invested money in these trailers. And we need to get the utilities hooked up to these trailers so that we can run better shelter, thank you.
Council President.
Director.
Council President.
Director Lopez wanted to speak uh when the Councilwoman was speaking, so. Um, I was gonna give her the opportunity and then um. To you, Mr. Harrison, Dr. Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Council President, I was just gonna add, and and Council uh Vice President Caldwell Wilson um explained it thoroughly. That in the midst of the pandemic and and COVID, that we did have an influx of pets coming to the shelter. Because of their homeowners who have tested positive, some have passed from COVID. So we did not want to have these pets being loose in the city, so this is why we house them, so it is an influx. And so when you're looking at mankind and humanity, you do take in consideration about animals and pets as well. So because again, if you don't take care of the the animals and the pets in the community, it does um lend to a health increase, a a a health concern. In the city of Trenton, and so this is why it's very important that we do our part and having these two trellers is is extremely important. And so uh, Council Vice President Mark Caldwell, I thank you for explaining that, because that's what I was pretty much was gonna say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Doctor. Um, Councilman Harrison?
Um, I would like to say that I have taken a tour at the animal shelter, it's overcrowded, uh, the men and women are there working so hard every day. Um, and at the end of the day, we need to do our part um to make sure that these animals are not, are actually being taken care of. Uh, they need the water, they need the plumbing, so I agree with Ms. Caldwell Wilson, I hope and pray that my colleagues vote for this, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Conlin, you may move to the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing $200,000 in funds allocated to Trenton. Under the American rest plan act 2021, including all office, Trent Animal Shelter, response. Ms. Caldwell, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Blakely, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blake.
I can't hear you, Mr. Caldwell. I can't.
There is so many. There are so many individuals that are not muted.
It's actually, everybody's pretty much muted. I've muted as many people as I can, I've been muting in between, but in this case, it's actually coming from.
It's coming from who?
It's actually coming from yours, some of the feedback over there is coming from yours. And I don't know why, I mean.
I'm just, I don't know why, because I don't have.
It's not anything you're doing potentially, I think it's just a feedback loop. So, but Mr. Blakely, this is your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Unmute yourself, Councilwoman, so we can hear your vote.
No vote.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Everything between here and 21-477 is on the consent agenda. Uh, so let me just get to 21-477.
Put it up on the screen, please.
Yes, ma'am, just give me one second, I got to do my papers first, because these are the master copy.
My father had called them.
Could you please, IT, please, I'm begging, please mute people in the background and please, ladies and gentlemen, if you could take the time to mute yourselves, and if IT could just mute everybody but council at this point in time, greatly appreciated. Okay, let's get to 21-477. Next, we have resolution 21-477. And this is a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Cowal Group Bank awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services in the city Trenton for structural removal of a two-brick front wall and open main roof located 437 Martin Luther King, Junior Boulevard, amount of $64,189. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Michelle, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
You may move to the vote.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, no vote.
Ms. Vaughn?
Councilwoman, will you unmute yourself?
No vote.
Council President McBride?
No.
Council President McBride votes no, the resolution carries by a vote of four to one, one no vote. I'm going with the legal opinion of Mr. Cloji.
Two no votes, I voted no vote, Mr. Caldwell.
Two no votes. I'm going with the opinion of Mr. Cloji that an emergency resolution requires four votes to pass. Next, we have resolution 21-478. This is a resolution authorizing payment for contract with Cowal Group and awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services in the city Trenton for two and a half story wood frame structure in a collapsed state located at 9597 Sweets Avenue in the amount of $27,790. Do I have a motion?
Some no.
No move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle. Floor is open.
Move to the vote.
I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No vote.
Ms. Vaughn?
No vote.
Council President McBride?
No.
So ordered, resolution carries by a vote of four to one with two no votes. Once again, that's based upon the legal opinion of Mr. Cloji. Next, we have resolution 21-479, a res- say again, sir?
What was that again? You said four yeses and what was?
Four yeses, one no, and two no votes.
Thank you. It passed, right?
Yes, according to Mr. Cloji's earlier legal opinion, it, it, it did pass. Uh, this is resolution, this is next resolution 21-479, a resolution authorizing payment for contract with Cowal Group Bank awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services in the city Trenton for structural removal of two and a half story wood frame structure due to fire, open roof areas and walls at the rear in a collapsed state located at 16818 South Clinton Avenue in the amount of $27,690. I do want to note to the council, I did receive late this afternoon the corrected word, spells collapsed correctly, uh, so that I do have that copy in my office, I didn't get to upload it, uh, but do I have a motion?
No move.
A motion by Mr. Michelle, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
Move to the vote.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No vote.
Ms. Vaughn?
No vote.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to one with two no votes. Next, we have resolution 21-481. This is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract core mechanical for HVA systems, prevent remains and repairs and a replacement at various city facilities for a period of two years from October 8, 2021 to October 27th, to October 7, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $415,000 through bid 2021-52. So I have a motion. A motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, the floor is open.
Move to the vote.
Mr. Blakely, your role, please.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No vote.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by five to one with one no vote. Next, we have resolution 21-482, and I do have a question about this one. Um, I received a walk-on from, uh, Ms. Harrison asked for a walk-on, uh, and I'm actually bringing it up at this point in time, because I believe the walk-on would supersede the appropriation for this. Um, so I'm just going to read this into the record first.
No, 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 Mr. Caldwell. The only thing that we're dealing with tonight is the resolution here. There will be no walk-ons, because the walk-ons is something, an additional, and we're going to deal with the resolution that was in the review and what is, um, what the council members have in front of them, no walk-ons.
Uh, that being considered, did the administration want to hold this uh, in light of the new resolution, which seems to overlap this one?
It would be their best interest to go ahead and vote on this resolution as it is.
Council President?
I don't know, Mr. Harrison. It'll be in the, it'll be in the, in the administration's best interest to vote on this resolution as it is.
Mr. Harrison, did you want to make a motion? Or did Mr. Cruz want to make, who do you guys want to do?
Madam President?
Yes, yes, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, Madam President, if the will of the council is not to walk on the other resolution, uh, then we will have no choice but to table it until the other resolution is heard first. Uh, we cannot do, uh, we cannot do this resolution without having the funding um, available with the resolution that Mr. Harrison was going to walk on tonight.
Yeah, and I looked, I looked at them, they are different resolutions, it's not an amendment. One is for $52,000, the other is for $200,000, includes a bunch of other stuff. It's not, it's not the same resolution anymore, it's, it's completely, totally. This one's for awarding of a bid, the other one is not, so that's why I didn't, you know, it's not a simple amendment. It's actually, it's a total different beast, so.
So do you want to, so do you want to move forward, given the Briggs Library the HVAC system they need? Or do you want to, uh, uh, try to insert something that has nothing to do with the HVAC system at the Briggs Library?
Um, Madam President, so the, the, the Briggs Library has three components that need to be addressed before we come moving to the interior. One of them is the HVAC for the heating, the other one is the, uh, the roof, and the other one is the windows, because the, the windows are also leaking, so.
But nobody ever came to this body and said that there were going to be over $200,000 for nothing at the Briggs Library, so, um, no. If you, uh, if you want to, if you guys want to, um, uh, play games with that money, with that RAP money, um, it's not going to be tolerated. If you want to give the Briggs Library their HVAC system, then, um, you could move this resolution now if you would like.
Yeah, so.
I'd move to table this.
I have a motion. Um, is, is, uh, Mr. Blakely, is there any condition on tabling, or is it indefinitely, or is it till the next meeting, or?
Um, indefinitely.
I have motion to table, Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
We, we need to vote to give them this money for their roof, for their HVAC system.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, I do have to hear the motion to table, motion to table indefinitely by Mr. Blakely. I have a second by Mr. Harrison, I'll call the roll. This is to table indefinitely, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
No, they need their HVAC system repaired.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Is this from the ARPA funds?
This is, no, no, this is to table indefinitely.
Oh, no.
Council President McBride?
No.
Motion to table fails, Council President, do I have a motion to move 21-482 to the floor?
Yes.
I have a motion by Council President McBride to move 21-82 to the floor, do I have a second? Ms. Caldwell Wilson, second, and I'll call the roll, this is approved, this is approved resolution 21-482, Mr. Blakely?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Can I, can I, uh, say something, Mr. Caldwell?
It's a vote.
We're going to fix the air conditioner, but we got a hole in the roof. We got the roof, we got the window problems.
We already gave them the money to pay for the roof, what are you talking about? We already voted the money out to pay for.
What about the windows, Council President?
Listen, we have a resolution in front of you.
They can bring another resolution for the rest of the repairs.
Yeah, we'll bring up another resolution, and, and I'll walk that on too, and you'll, and you'll, and you'll deny that too. Uh, yes, Council President.
Everything right by Briggs Library, and I don't know where you were at from the beginning.
Nah, I don't know why.
That has been, I have been championing for the Briggs Library since my, um, since I came on this council. You haven't even been over to the Briggs Library and it's in your ward, so don't come playing games with me, Council.
Council President, again, Council President.
Go right ahead to the vote, Mr. Harrison.
July, I walked on the roof, and you, and you, I walked it on July, you voted it down, then August you bring it back up. That's the truth, go back to check.
To the vote.
Check the record.
Sir, your vote, sir?
Yes, the air conditioner.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Just make my notes about the motion to table. Next, we have resolution 21-483, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to General Chemical and Supply for the first furnishing and delivery of general supplies for a period of two years from September 10, 2021, September 9, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $100,000, $50,000 per year through bid 2021-35.
Some no.
I have a motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Could you, um, could you? Yes, got it.
Do I have a second for the body?
Yes.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Michelle. Floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President?
No.
I heard, I, I, I heard you, ma'am.
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Yes, resolution carries by a vote of six to one. So ordered, next we have resolution 21-484, this is a resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract to Yaris Landscapes for snow plowing and snow removal hallings, for six months, with an option to extend for two additional six months on a as needed basis to complement division or street, in an amount not to exceed $160,000 through bid 2021-52.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, the floor is open.
Uh, Council President? Again, I would just say, um, these contracts that the administration is putting forward um, for two years and, and six figures and, you know, it's just irresponsible. And, um, and one of our residents described it, you know, eloquently on Tuesday. It, it just makes no sense. Um, and we're not really being fiscally prudent when we give contracts to the vendor for two thirds and, and, uh, and for six figures. Thank you, I won't be moved for this.
Move to the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three? So ordered. Next, we have resolution 21-485, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to MNC Concrete LLC for sidewalk curb driveway apron restoration for the townships for a period of one year from October 8, 2021 to October 7, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $106,001, through bid 2021-55, do I have a motion? Motion for the body? Motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, a second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Michelle, actually, I believe, who won the gun. Floor is open.
Move to the vote.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to two. Next, we have resolution 21-485. That was resolution 21-45, I'm sorry, next we have resolution 21-486. This is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract. Hold on one second, I'm getting a lot of feedback, so I'm going to meet some people before we continue. Okay, this is resolution 21-486, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Brentag Northeast LLC for the furnishing and delivery of potassium per maginate contact, contract for a period of one year from October 22, 2021 to October 21, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $356,400 through bid 2021-64. Do I have a motion?
Some no.
Motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, floor is open.
Move to the vote.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Blak- Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
What is this now?
This is for potassium per maginate, man- maniginate for the water system.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash four eighty-seven, this is a resolution authorizing a contract amendment, uh, to resolution number twenty dash five thirty-six, awarding.
Mr. Colin, they wanted to table this because they wanted to hear from the gentleman, Mr. Uh, O'Brien, I believe it is.
I have motion to table for the Council President McBride till the presentation by Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second?
Uh, I would table.
Councilman, uh, Harrison and Councilman, um, Rodriguez.
Santiago.
Yeah, but I removed my table and I mean, I go, I'm gonna vote no to it.
Okay, but I still do have the motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second by Mr. Harrison to table?
Table until I get the permission from O'Brien.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely, I'll now call, this is to table until, uh, he, uh, the, a presentation is done by, uh, Mr. O'Brien, uh, for the additional votes. Uh, I'll call the roll for the motion to table, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh, no vote.
Ms. Vaughn.
No vote.
Council President McBride.
Um, I'll, um, I'll vote to table it and, um, Mr. Um, Mr. Uh, Colin, if we could get, um, this gentleman in here on the fourth of November, I'd appreciate it. Our, our docket is gonna be packed, so we're gonna keep it light because we have a lot of, uh, we have a lot of business to do on that particular day.
Yeah, and I have election on November second, so, uh, i- it between the days before the election, I'm actually gonna be out in the field, uh, mostly, so I will try to get the, uh, meeting set up immediately and I should be able to.
Well, if it, if they can't go to November the fourth, you can push it to the next one.
I think we'll be able to accommodate that, ma'am, I mean.
Because you, you have an executive session on the fourth and you have a couple of, um, of, uh, ordinances coming back on the fourth and, um, and, and this, so.
We'll get it all in, uh, I will call Mr. O'Brien tomorrow, uh.
Madam President?
Yes.
Also, I believe we requested a report, but if, the, the copy of the final report from Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, I don't. An interim.
Whatever he have, bring it. Whatever documentation he has, bring it and make a full report to the council.
Will do, ma'am. Council President, that is the last of the ordinances, I'm sorry, the last of the resolutions, we do have one ordinance, let me just check my calendar here, uh, we are on the twenty-first. Uh, this would be for a public hearing on November fourth, twenty twenty.
And, and Mr. Mr. Colin, what about the, the ordinances that you had, um, that you had, uh, put off into a later date, you, that you was, uh, were to bring back for a public hearing?
Uh, that was the only, the, the, that was, the only one was at the top, this would be for the introduction, uh, the other one has been carried forward, all the other ordinances were pulled by administration, no request was made to pull them back. Uh, I will wait until I hear from the business administrator to do so, uh, this would be for a public hearing on November fourth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M. This is ordinance twenty-one dash zero two six, this is an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified in the city tax map, it's five twenty-two, Saint Joe's Avenue, block twenty-two, eight oh three, lot twenty-two, pursuant to N J S A forty colon cap A twelve dash thirteen B five, to one Regal Auto for the sum of three thousand dollars. Do I have motion for the introduction?
Some of them.
Ms. Caldwell.
Second.
A second by Mr. Rodriguez, I don't know, uh, the floor is open.
You may move to the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am, this is for the, uh, to set the public hearing date for November fourth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution, or the ordinance carries seven to zero, the public hearing will be November fourth, twenty twenty-one. Council President, that is all of the business before the body as far as the resolutions and ordinances go, would you like to move to public comment?
Yes, definitely.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public comment portion of the Trenton City Council meeting, you'll have ten minutes to speak on any topic that you wish, we ask that you keep to the rules of decorum, uh, and Robert's rules, Robert's rules do not actually allow the attacking of any particular individual.
Mr. Colin, can you display the memo on the screen while they're doing the public comment?
Yes, ma'am, so, with me for one sec, uh, if you wish to be acknowledged by the Trenton City Council for public comment, raise your hand, I will seek acknowledgement from, for you, from the Council President, at which time you will have ten minutes to speak, I will time you, I'll notify you when you have thirty seconds left. And in the meantime, this is the memorandum that went out to the body. Does anybody wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for a public portion for tonight? Council President, first we have Ms. Mary Horn.
Go right ahead, Ms. Horn.
Yes, I'll be brief, um, thank you, Council. I'd just like to say, um, I, 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 I feel disheartened when, uh, we have not discussed the issues that, that affect our people, our residents and taxpayers here in the city. I, I'm always being approached by people who are looking for somewhere to go or some information on how they can get assistance and help. And, uh, I, I don't really see a lot of that being brought to the table. A- and also is that, uh, I see where we're spending a lot of money in the city too, and it still has not been trickled down to the residents and the taxpayers. I, I don't really understand why, and maybe I do. But, um, it's just, i- it, it makes me disheartened to not hear that more about the people and what the city can do for the taxpayers in the city. And it appears that, and I have to say this, that no matter what's on the docket, and there's a lot of money being spent here in the city drawn down on, but we will always have and always have had the four and the affirmative vote. So no matter how someone feels about something, it appears that if it is deemed to be passed, it will be passed. So I don't know, I don't think there's a way around that. I, I would hope that, uh, council would consider, uh, 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 how we're spending the money, where the money's going to, and I don't believe anybody is against a lot of these, uh, resolutions, but, uh, it's just that we, the people, we need help too in this city, and if we're spending all this money, there's not gonna be anything left for us. And why aren't we getting more help? And that's all I have to say, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Next, Council President, we have Danielle Gletow.
Let's go right ahead.
Uh, yes, good evening, um, my name is Danielle Gleto, I am the, um, Executive Director of Trenton Animals Rock, and I just wanted to first thank council for passing the use of these trailers that we have been waiting on for quite some time. But I also just wanted to really stress, uh, the importance of animals and how they relate to your residents in the city of Trenton. We have several, um, community members that we work with every single day that are struggling to feed animals, and these animals, for many of them, are either their sole source of support or provide additional emotional support for them that really have kept them going during some pretty hard times. Um, by passing these trailers and allowing us now to focus on some more innovative programming like we've been doing for the past three years, we're going to be able to provide more services to the residents of the city of Trenton, which I believe is what hopefully everybody who's, um, participating in these calls, uh, really is all about doing. And that is making sure that we are looking at problems in a way that we can be collaborative and innovative and doing things that are bettering, uh, bettering the community. The animal shelter before we got involved was never a resource to the residents of the city of Trenton. It was a place where forty-seven percent of all the animals who entered went to die. Now they receive animal care, they receive socialization, and we're also able to assist residents of the city of Trenton who need to either rehome their pets or struggling to provide preventative or other medical care, um, to keep them alive. And this has become a really important resource for the city, and it's really just the beginning of what we're doing. Um, I wanted to speak because I want to invite council to please come and visit the city, um, the city's animal shelter. It is a different place. And as somebody who runs a national nonprofit organization that is dedicated to children and those impacted by the trauma of foster care, serving tens of thousands of human beings a year, I understand the need to address human suffering just as much as animal suffering, and I don't think it's an either or, and I don't think anybody should ever think it's an either or. So I invite you to come out to learn about how we collaborated with, um, not only the animal control officers, but the Department of Health, um, and the mayor's office, on making sure that we were addressing problems that residents cared about. And this is just the beginning of a lot of good work we're going to do. So, uh, my email address is, um, info at T A R N J dot org. Uh, you are all welcome at the shelter anytime to meet with me, I would love to tell you more about this programming, and I have offered myself as a resource to assist with other programming as well. So, um, I'm glad this passed, it was a long time coming, and, um, I look forward to seeing each of you visit with us so we could talk not only about the animal shelter, but about some other ways that we can support the residents in this city. Thank you.
Council President, next we have Ms. Wendy Sturgeon.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Sturgeon.
I just, uh, Wendy Sturgeon, I'm in Hamilton Township, New Jersey, I just wanted to thank from the bottom of my heart all the council members who supported the funds for, uh, the Trenton Animal Shelter. I volunteered there at one point for about ten years, and it's a long time coming to get the animals, uh, the services that they need, and I, I just can't thank you all enough for, uh, voting to approve the funds so that Trenton Animals Rock can continue to do the great work and service to the community that they've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, next we have Mr. Michael Rinallo.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Rinallo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, um, I just want to echo what Danielle said previously, um, and thank the members of council that voted to approve the expenditure to move the trailers. Um, I think it's an important hallmark to, um, a, a city to have a, a civil and, um, well-funded and humane animal shelter. And this will go a long way towards moving us to that because learning the history recently, um, it hasn't been that, so I think this is extremely important. And I did speak Tuesday for this, so I just want to thank and sincerely thank the, the members that voted for this. So, thank you for your time, uh, have a good evening.
Next, Mr. Colin.
Yes, Council President, next we have Joanne Stewart.
Go right ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Yes, thank you for, um, letting me come on. Um, I want to go to the, um, the memorandum that's up on the screen right now. It's great that, you know, there's, there's been a resolution to an extent to it for, for everyone, um, but I'm, just a few questions about it, um, it says that, um, it's been resolved and you will be renting the necessary radios and equipment to ensure communication. Now, what exactly does equipment include? Is that all radio communication, the car radios and the handhelds? Um, or what's included in equipment? Um, other, another question regarding it is how does this affect the previous contract? Um, and does this new deal with the county open up the city to any kind of litigation from the person who was providing or the company who was providing, um, the radio service for the past year who still hasn't been paid?
That will have to be taken up with the police director or the mayor's office.
For both of those questions, ma'am?
Yes.
Council President? Council President, uh, answer.
No, 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 you may submit an answer to her in writing, this is a council meeting, but you can take your business on police time, and so can the mayor.
Ms. Stewart, if you forward an email to my office, I'll make sure it gets forwarded, it's clerk@trentonnj.org.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Uh, Council President, next we have Ms. Sherry Garrett.
Wow.
Go right ahead, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, Council President and the council body. Um, I, I echo, um, the same sentiments in regards to these trailers for twenty-one four sixty-six. My concern is that, you know, Trenton has always been used as, still is, a cash cow and a dumping ground. And I know, um, in the past, people would, I've heard people in conversations who don't live in Trenton where they dropped their dog off in Trenton, or I even heard people say, or they dropped an animal they could no longer keep, you know, uh, went on the highway and opened the door and let the, the animal out the car. So, I say all that, um, to say that all these animals that you all are saying, I, I mean, I, I, I've had animals all my life as well um, and care for them like they were my own children. But the point is, um, are these animals from residents of Trenton? Are these animals are left here because people, you know, because they think they live in a certain, uh, municipality, don't have enough courage to do the right thing, or because there's so many cutbacks in their municipality, it's easy just to come and dump it in Trenton. So that's just my concern, you know, the cost. And also, instead of trailers, we got so many buildings in Trenton, why didn't we donate? Well, why didn't the city donate a large building for the animal shelter? I, 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 it just behooves me, like, we're in trailers? Like, why, all the big, the, the buildings, especially commercial buildings in Trenton that could have been you, given more ample space, a lot of space, other than the two trailers and where it's already located, required, uh, uh, space to operate. So I'm not understanding why we're, we're, um, uh, hooking up trailers to water systems and stuff when we could have given the animal shelter a huge building to accommodate itself. Okay? So, um, and also, since we're, I, I'm not saying this because I don't know, because I, like, like someone stated, you know, in regards to animals, the animal can't say who they came from, you know, but if this is what's happening and this has been an issue, an ongoing issue for a while, why haven't we given, you know, created space for the animal shelter? Um, also, you know, some of these votes, uh, for a lot of these, uh, the stuff that the mayor has played out into the media that some of you council folks have voted on, um, I hope that this doesn't come back to haunt you. And personally, because I don't know if you realize that even though the people voted for you, you know, you could be liable, uh, personally too. You know what I'm saying? Because he already campaigned and put it out there, and he's, um, and the matter of how he's doing it sounds like this, you know, is he's not on the, uh, up and up about how he's doing stuff. I'm not saying he ain't, but it just seems like, I hope you all don't get caught out there. You know, um, in regards to, um, oh, oh, in regards to the snow, I recall that there was an issue, uh, Council President McBride brought up that monies were borrowed from the snow removal account, and here we're trying, you're voting on a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, what happened to that money? That's, that's my question. Uh, was it ever replenished? And, uh, one other thing, we don't, you know, we city residents, I don't really get, you know, some of the, you know, council persons and some of the administration and some of the, uh, so-called, um, uh, uh, people who represent some certain people within the city, but to me, you know, it, it, it goes back to that vote about the cannabis. Like, to me, you want ten dispensaries or more, like, to me, it seems like you want, you, you think, it just, it seems like people on the thing that, the people on this mindset, that everybody in Trenton is, uh, backwards or are illiterate or blind. or illiterate or blind or just not focused. And like, you know, there could be, and that could be, and that mindset, it could be in any municipality, it ain't just Trenton. Okay? You know, I don't know why people think that, I don't know why people think that label people in urban areas, you know, like, we don't know what's going on. We can read between the lines. And I can say for one, for myself, you know, I'm on this call all the time, and I have not, I have not witnessed, you know, the slander that Council President McBride has been getting and Councilwoman Vaughn. I just, I've not, they drilled down, they really tried to, from my point of view, you know, be fair. Especially Council President McBride, she really does. I think she has, in her four years, four years as council president, really had to hone in, and I see that there's some difference in the matter of allowing you all when you have objections. So I see that, I guess with this, the attorney, I'm sorry, I can't think of his name right now, has really helped guide the council because it allowed you all to have objections or, not objections, had allowed you all the platform to say, okay, let's take a vote. Let's, you know, see if it's, you know, we all are on the same page, blah, blah, blah. So I think, you know, council president has made some adjustments and has, you know, pulled this council together. But at the same time, as I said at one other council meeting, that, you know, some of you are doing the administration's bidding, and that's not your, that's not what you were elected for. And if you want to work for the administration, and I think you should see if they will hire you. Last night, that'll be interesting, they will hire you with some type of position, some role, so you could be an advocate, you know? But if not, then you need to really be, you know, because you're part of the people. You have been elected, you're part of, you are the oversight for the resident. Okay? So, you know, please, you know, for now on going forward, you know, when you start being vocal and attacking, you know, especially Council President McBride, please think twice because we don't like it. I'm telling you, we don't like it. And Councilwoman Vaughn, I, you know, she's an advocate. I mean, she's honed in her skills too. Everything is a learning curve, and I think you all have been doing a lot better. Some of you have, you know, I don't know what, where you are in your position, but I still don't, I think you're compromising your position on the council and the people in the city. And in regards to the upcoming election in the city, nobody has said nothing. So I don't know why there's a bunch of squabbling about who's running for mayor and who's not running for mayor, because that shouldn't even be your focus. Your focus should be making sure you drill down on these resolutions, these bills, this spending, and making sure that our taxes don't go up unnecessarily, and that we're getting the services that for all the tax money that's being provided to run the city is being provided to, you know, revitalize or move the city forward and make sure that you're promoting and representing what you think Trenton should be and Trenton should be moving forward. Because I just don't think that most of you are really, you know, getting it. And some of you are, some of you are, but come on now, enough is enough. This is, you know, you waste not our time too. You may have been elected, but you got to remember, we're all on this call too. We're making a sacrifice to give you the support, so remember that. Thank you.
Ms. Garrett, Mr. Conlon.
Council President, next we have Ms. Choudry.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Choudry. Go right ahead.
Okay, hi. The first thing I wanted to do is, first of all, thank the members of the community and residents that are on this call because I think they offer valuable insight, but that's just opinion. I wanted to just offer a public service kind of announcement. A couple of groups are getting together, including the Empowerment House, which is a nonprofit here in Trenton, and the Trenton South Ward Neighborhood Association. Capital Bounce House is coming out for a trunk or treat and movie night, and that's going to be on Friday, October twenty-ninth, at four hundred Union Street in Trenton at six P.M. The movie starts at six thirty. There's also going to be Colts, Love and a Half giveaway. Volunteers and participants are welcome. You can reach out to empowermenthouse@empowermenthouse823@gmail.com. That's empowermenthouse@823@gmail.com. I'm not like on the board or anything, or I just help out there, so just in full disclosure. The other issue that I wanted to address is the CCR bill that's up for passage in the New Jersey Assembly. I haven't heard much discussion of it. I think that policing continues to be a problem in a lot of areas, not just in Trenton. In order to fully understand the issue, we really have to get into like the theoretical underpinnings of, you know, democracy and the Constitution, and we don't have time to do that. However, some of the things that are happening in Trenton are so concerning and disturbing, you know? And I also get sick of euphemistic terms like, you know, we're concerned about it or, you know, need to look into this. I mean, really, at root, the things that are happening in Trenton policing are so undemocratic and unconstitutional, and I just don't, I don't understand how it's being tolerated. For instance, we have, we have the situation with Gloria Call. I can't pronounce her last name, but a Trenton police officer with kind of a history of some brutality, Ms. Tara, I'm not going to say this right, Durdchak, evidently, allegedly, according to open Trenton, Trentonian article, punched and kicked her several times. By the end of this, Gloria Call had two black eyes and her front teeth were knocked out. And there's just no reasonable reason that Trenton residents are literally getting beaten by Trenton police. I mean, there's no reasonable explanation for a woman who is less than five feet tall and less than a hundred pounds, that she would be beaten at this level. What bothered me too was that there were cover charges put on her in the end. She had injuries to her head, neck, back, and right leg. The cover charges that were put on her, you know, obviously to try to, you know, obfuscate the entire incident and somehow justify this level of violence, was that she was resisting arrest and I think assaulting a police officer, when it seems to me that it's much closer to the truth to say that she was recording the police as the police arrested someone in her household. The reason this concerns me so much is that I want everyone or anyone who doesn't know is listening on this call that you are always legally allowed to record the police with or without their permission, be it audio, be it video. If anybody ever tries to prevent you from recording to the police, meaning the police, they are absolutely out of line. What concerns me is this is the fourth time that it's happened here in Trenton that I've read about in the last fifteen months. There was an incident with a young bartender at a bar who was also basically given a black eye and scratched. Her name is Elizabeth Cisco, she's an employee at Championship Bar. She, in two thousand nineteen, had her phone whipped from her hands by a policeman who then basically looked like roughed her up and gave her a couple of black eyes or one black eye. I mean, this is outrageous. This is literally outrageous. I'm concerned that Trenton police are not perhaps understanding the law, are not respecting the law, not trained in the law. I don't think, police are trained for six months. Barbers, on the other hand, are trained for ten months, in case you haven't heard that comparison. Six months is perhaps not enough to train police outside of a few go-to allegations, and this is really concerning. I feel that as a civil rights issue, it's really concerning. I would, I think that Trenton Police Department as a whole needs to start looking much more carefully at civil rights issues. Sometimes I agree with the get tough on crime. You need to start getting tough on civil rights crimes because they seem to be happening all the time. These are massive civil rights violations. To pull a phone out of somebody's hand, in my opinion, is significant and major violation. So I also think that we need more, we need more communication on Trenton's website. The only real significant changes I've seen in policing here are small changes to the website, and that's just sort of a rhetorical issue. So I just wanted to emphasize again that, you know, talking about having community members involved and, you know, feedback being important needs to be taken a little bit more seriously. I know we have a new director who's just stepped in. I know that we're doing, they're doing different training, but that's state mandated. There needs to be something more significant. I think that you need to, you know, fundamentally, you know, make sort of a paradigm shift in your thinking about policing to really change it, which is a different and longer discussion. But I would ask everyone who's listening on this call to get your voices heard about what's happening with policing in Trenton. Support the passage of civilian review boards with subpoena powers that are able to hold our police accountable, you know? Try to change that shift of power so that police are not allowed to do whatever they want. They are held to the law like anybody else. I haven't heard a lot of discussion about it, just like I haven't heard discussion of, you know, Stephen Dulcie Moore and Joseph R. We just don't hear about these people again. And we need to have more transparency. We need, I think, links on the Trenton website, particularly the Internal Affairs website. We need a simple link that lets people know where to go to file a complaint. There's a link for the complaint, for a consumer complaint, but almost nothing. Letting residents know what their rights are, what they can expect when they file a complaint, what the timeframes are to expect and demand. We need to have a link that goes to the force report so we can look up our police and other watchdog agencies. I think that, you know, if we are really looking for community policing and involvement for communities, the Internal Affairs Department as well as the entire police department needs to do a little bit more. And so I encourage everybody to get involved, get your voices heard, you know, and qualified immunity and all these things that led to the issues that happened. And the civilian review board bill doesn't look like it, it might not pass, but please make your voices heard. Thank you.
Council President, I'm going to see if there's anybody else that wishes to speak. Does anybody else wish to speak for tonight's public portion?
If not, I would move to close the public portion.
I motion to close the public portion by Council President McBride. Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Ms. Caldwell-Wolson? All in favor?
Yes.
All right. That's four. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion is closed. The civic comment is open, Council President.
Yes, I'll move to Councilman Blakely.
No comment, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson.
Yes, I just want to thank my colleagues that voted for the hookup for the trailers at the animal shelter. And I hope, I would like to think that they would at least try and stop by there and see the kind of conditions that the workers have over there. There's not enough focus on that whole part of the city. And, you know, I would hope that you would continue to support the shelter because, like I said, if we don't take care of stray animals, then we have a health issue, another health issue in the city. And Ms. Garrett, we don't know if animals are chained to the fence. You don't know where they come from, but you can't just ignore it, you have to take them in. And thank you again, and thank you, everybody, for coming to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Harrison?
First, I would like to say, for, I don't know, a while now, I've been having to walk off, walk on stuff because stuff is being pulled off the docket. Briggs Library had been pulled off the docket. The animal shelter had been pulled off the docket. It's on here again now, which I'm glad to see that my colleagues have supported it. But Briggs Library has been on air, was on air previously back in July, got pulled, I tried to walk it on, went in August, tried walking it on again, put it down, got put back on again. So this is what I keep saying here, let's get pulled off the docket by one person, the council president. So council president, I had to walk on hazard pay, maybe forget about that one too. Carroll Construction, Carroll Construction, they should get paid. We have a lot of properties in the city that need to come down. So I'm grateful to see my colleagues are supporting that because at the end of the day, we have a lot of buildings that are catching on fire or need to be taken down. You know, you put a fence around it, but still, over time, we need to take them down. So like I said, the council president, I said, please, stop taking stuff off the docket. Let us move the city forward. Like I said, I hope soon a resolution is on there for the Briggs Library regarding the windows. So I am supporting my ward, and I'm supporting everybody on this council to hope move the city forward. Thank you very much.
Councilman Youschau?
Yes, I'd just like to say I'm saddened by what we did with the radio room. This is not a win. We lost for the eighty-six thousand people in the city of Trenton, the fire department, the police department. Our staff set these radios up in the car and made sure communication was one hundred percent accurate to the radio room. Using walkie-talkies, anybody with any knowledge, anyone, council member. Mr. Rodriguez, a walkie-talkie is not as effective as the system. They will let you down. I just pray to God, none of your family members need help, that the police go out there on a nine-one-one call and they can help you because you're not going to get assistance. There's so many dead spots in the city of Trenton. This is suicide, what we did today. God bless you. Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Oh, yes, I just want to clarify, want a clarification to Councilman Youschau. Nobody said that we are not going to, what we want is a better, better radio room, a lot better than what you friends from MPS have been giving us. We have, for three and a half years, I have been fighting to change what has been going on with the lack of communication. You people claim that we are putting the community at risk, the police officers at risk now, but you have allowed the fire department and the police officers to be at risk for three, at least three and a half years. You have done nothing to make sure that we get the right equipment. That equipment that's there is not old, so relatively new. Say it was two thousand thirteen, they started the process. I have the resolution here. But nobody made sure that that was the quality equipment that we should have got for City Hall. This time around, we are not going to rush, we are not going to rush. We are going to make sure that we get state-of-the-art radio room for our police officers and our fire department. That's why we have agreed, this, I'm going to fight for this issue to be resolved as soon as possible. I was the one, Mr. Youschau, that gave the idea to Director Wilson of using the four million dollars from the American Rescue Plan. I did that four months ago. So there was plenty of time, plenty of time for that proposal to be put together at F P or anything within the last four months. And we have had plenty of time to have a decent radio room equipped with the best equipment. If you, Councilman Youschau, that is such a friend of the MPS, would have done your duty, if you had supported me when I was screaming at city council meetings for years until it covered enough, you knew all this. You knew because you voted for this MPS. So don't put it on me, Councilman Youschau, put it on yourself. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, I am extremely disappointed about this letter that's on display here as well as a meeting that took place today with the council president and the county executive. And then it got posted to, I think, to Trentonian, went out to the media even before the council president was supposed to update the council members. I don't know who made this decision, but it certainly was not done collaboratively. It definitely was done in isolation with a select few. At the, to the detriment of the residents and taxpayers of the city of Trenton. We have gotten plenty of expert advice, even from, we paid for an extensive analysis with H H W Group LLC. They were supposed to be on tonight to give an overview of the state-of-the-art federal communications commission standard public safety. Communications Commission standard public safety radio system. But who knows what happened? Somebody unilaterally made the decision not to have them present. Whether or not they agreed to go with the services that the county is offering us, we still should have had the presentation. We still should have, we still should have them here to present. And we should still go out to other, would somebody please, Council President, I think that's coming from you, you can mute yourself, thank you. I had mentioned to the Council President that we should go out to the county and look at their radio system. We should go out to the state police and look at their radio system and go up to other counties and local governments to see what they're using. Mainly, we should comply with FCC regulation. And right now, the county system is substandard. It's only 500 megahertz, okay? And that is not FCC standard. The standard is now, I believe, from 700, 700 megahertz, okay? And current day, Gloucester County has moved to the 700 megahertz Motorola system, FCC approved, compliant with regulation. The county is not. So you got Gloucester County, you got Morris County, you got Camden County, Ocean County, and Essex County, and others that have moved over the years to the FCC standard of a public safety radio system. And it's not the 500 megahertz one at the county. So I agree with Council Mishaou that that's not the radio system that we should be using and transferring to temporarily or otherwise. The county itself needs to upgrade to the 700 megahertz system. So I don't know what County Executive Hughes is offering us, but he's offering us a substandard radio, public radio system that's not even, no longer compliant with the FCC regulations, the Federal Communications Commission. So I don't know who made that decision. I was not in that room, but clearly, they did not have the expertise input that was required to make that decision. So I believe we need to go look again and consult with the professionals and the subject matter experts on public safety radio. And, and look what our counterparts are doing in other local governments and county governments. Because these are, I mean, to go to that system is just unconscionable for our city. When Trenton owns, has 10 frequencies that it owns, we have the state police that we can leverage, which their system is better than a county's. So we need to go out and meet with Callahan, Lieutenant Colonel Callahan of the New Jersey State Police, and see what they have to offer as well. To jump to the county is just ridiculous. And we have time to do it because I believe MPS said they'll, you know, work with us until the end of the month. So I don't know what the urgency was. I think it's premature. I think it was exclusive. And this is what happens when you have closed meetings and behind, and behind the door deals, because then decisions are made bad, you know, poorly. We should have came to this council meeting in front of the public here tonight and had a discussion and shook out the facts. Because I think the folks who made that decision were grossly, were misinformed and miseducated on the, on public radio systems. And I will ask again, I mean, hey, I don't, I don't need the Council President or Executive Brian Hughes to, to go and look at the various radio systems. But I would, I would ask that they do that for the citizens of the city and for our police department, emergency medical and fire departments. We deserve the best technology in the state ER, and we need to be compliant with federal FCC rules and regulations. We need to be moved to the 700 megahertz platform, period. Okay? Because under the county system, as Mishaou, Councilman Mishaou just stated, you're going to get a lot of interference, a lot of interference. That's what I'm being told. And so we need to move off there. We shouldn't even go on there. We should just go straight to start upgrading to the 700 megahertz Motorola platform, as was outlined and recommended by HHW Group LLC. Now, that report is available for anyone to see, and I will make it available to everyone and read it. That's the state, I mean, you can go out to the FCC website as well. 700 megahertz, Gloucester County is on it, Morris County, Camden County, Ocean County, Essex County, and many more across the state of New Jersey. And here we are, Mercer County, still work on a 500 megahertz antiquated system that even FCC does not even support anymore and is in violation of their rules and regulations. So why would we go on that system? So I hope the Council President and, and the mayor and Brian Hughes, the county executive, come to their senses and, and do the right thing and educate themselves before they come up with a proposal to the city of Trenton, to go to an antiquated 500 megahertz, a megahertz system that's obsolete. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn. So I would first like to thank each and every one of you for coming on this call, for all of the public and for the directors. And I just would like to speak to the decision that was made today. I, for one, Councilman Rodriguez and myself went to the meeting. Everyone knew who was going to be in that meeting today. It wasn't a closed session meeting. Councilwoman Vaughn knew very well, we were going to...
I did not, I did not.
Yes, you did.
I did not, I did not.
Stop lying, don't interrupt me.
No, you stop lying, I did not.
And don't interrupt me when I'm talking.
Well, don't, don't lie on me.
Mute her, Mr. Collin, because I would not tolerate her disrespect. She knew that we were going to be in the meeting. She knew that Councilman Rodriguez was invited into the meeting with me. Now, let me just share this with the public. In 10 days, MPS said that they were leaving. We should have had an injunction on MPS. We should have went into the courts and had an injunction to stop them from leaving. They have been operating since 2020 without a contract, and everyone knew they didn't have a contract, and everyone knew that we should have been trying to build up our radio room. You talk about having infractions in the future. What about the fact that we had a bank robber, bank robbery, and the police couldn't even call for backup? And the bank robber got away on a bike? For crying out loud, what's any worse than that? What about all of our children that lay dead in the streets today? So don't tell me about the urgency of what decision was made today. The decision that was made today was granted to the city of no charge, a loan for the equipment, giving the administration and this body time to go out and either put a public bid out for someone to come into Trenton and start building out a state-of-the-art radio room. That is what we asked for. The county only extended equipment to us for a short period of time. The process is beginning today. So if Councilwoman Vaughn wants to deem herself an expert, then she can be in on the conversations that will take place with the administration and the council as a whole. But what I suggest is that we use the radios and the devices that the county is offering us while the administration put up the RFPs or go with the state. However they do it, they have to come back to this body to show us what they're doing. And we don't mind paying for the radio room, but we want a state-of-the-art's radio room. What we're doing now is just so that we can get through to those RFPs. We don't have to settle for anything. We want state-of-the-art, put it out for bid, let the IT company that can come in here and transform that radio room from a business system to a P25 that is compatible with the state. And the county, they work off of a P25 system. I don't know where Councilwoman Vaughn is getting all of her information from because she could have also been in the meeting today. So I don't want to hear that from her. We did the best thing that we could do based on the urgency. And the urgency is that MPS said that they are leaving within 10 days, and it's going to take us 10 days, it's going to take us about seven days to make sure that all of our equipment is ready, that we are able to rent from Motorola the equipment that the county doesn't have. And for anyone that wants any more information, you can go either to, directly to the director, the acting director, Mr. Steve Wilson, or you can make an appointment or reach out to the county technical IT person. We went, Councilman Rodriguez and I went to their radio room. They have a state-of-the-art's radio room over there, and that's the way we want Trenton to look when it's all said and done. So we only acted based on the urgency now, giving us time to work with this administration to get out those RFPs so that we can begin to build out our radio room. And it might cost more than $4 million to do it, but that's a price tag that I'm happy to, to sign on to because that radio room is important. It is for our first responders, for our residents, and all of the visitors that come into the city. I thank Councilman Rodriguez again for accompanying me today because he knew about the Kenwood system, he knew about the Motorola system, he knew that the city of Trenton had an 800 megahertz frequency, he knew about the radio room. He had 15 years' experience. I was happy to have you with me, Councilman Rodriguez. I was happy to have Mr. Kaloji with me today. And again, I thank County Executive Brian Hughes and his staff for loaning us that equipment so we could take the $4 million that the mayor was suggesting that we spend on equipment that has nothing to do with our radio room, and we can use that $4 million towards a state-of-the-art's radio room. So I thank you again, and thank everyone that attended the meeting. And I'm happy that we can move forward into building out that radio room. I would again like to say to the public that if you want answers about the radio room, you can call Steve Wilson, you can call the Mercer County IT Department. I guess you could go through either Kelly Ganges' office or the administrator's office, but there are people that can answer your questions. Thank you again for coming on. Again, I have a good night, a blessed weekend. And Mr. Collin, I would like to move for adjournment at this time.
I motion to adjourn, but Council President McBride, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Ms. Caldwell-Wolson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned at 7:30 PM. Everybody have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good night.